Hiring a gentleman, so his girlfriend is here, woman that...
What are you hiring your student for?
So, welcome to the November 9th, 2023 Parma City School Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Nusia. Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mr. Luda.
Present.
Mrs. Schwark.
Present.
Mr. Striker.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smilek, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor all live streamings throughout the meetings that there is a problem? Please speak immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed.
It will be immediate, sir.
Thank you, sir. To this, I open the floor to you, Parma Proud's. Are you ready for Parma Proud's?
I am. We will actually turn the floor over to Mrs. Urban for this. This is the second meeting that we're doing this. We have chosen families who have in some way dedicated a great sense of resilience as they have faced some type of adversity, as they've worked through our school system, and yet really persevered and shown their dedication to education and the school community. So, Mrs. Urban, can you step forward and begin to explain your choices?
Good evening. Sorry, we're having a little bit of a... There we go. Okay. So, we actually selected six students. I know the limit was five, but two of them are brothers, so we thought that that would be okay to slip an extra one in there. So, each one of our administrators will come up along with the student, and we'll share a little blurb about them. And we also have a presentation that highlights one of their favorite quotes. So, when we selected these students, they've demonstrated resilience, and we asked them to provide us with a quote that means something to them that, you know, when they're having a moment or they're feeling down, this quote kind of helps pick them up. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to introduce Mrs. Kruseck, and she's going to talk about our first student. Okay, our first student is Ray Brown. Ray, can you join me up here, please? Okay, this is Ray. He is a 10th grader at Normandy, and he is most proud of being a member of the Normandy High Football Team. He also loved meeting and befriending all his new teammates from Parma this year. His highlights of Normandy include his rapport with Mrs. Urban and his teachers, Mrs. Merchi and Mrs. Peters. Ray says that his teachers help him with work, take time to explain things to him, and never are upset with him. Ray states that his grades represent me, so it's important that they are good, so he can get into a higher education and a good job. Others would describe Ray as funny, hardworking, and a good friend. Ray's future plans include attending college and pursuing football while there. Ray's quote is, "Wake up determined, go to bed satisfied." This is Ray Brown. Okay, our next student is Haley Helmick, or H Squared, as I like to call her. Haley, if you want to come join me down here. Haley is a junior at Normandy and is currently enrolled in our medical program. She plans to be an ER nurse because she loves helping people and has a passion for learning more about the medical field. Haley is a member of the Normandy Marching Band, works at McDonald's, and enjoys hanging out with her friends. She loves coming to school because she is a lifelong learner and is focused on earning good grades so she can attend college. Haley is always looking to advocate for others and does the right thing even when no one is looking. She's the true definition of resilience, and all of her teachers comment about her outstanding work ethic and willingness to help others. Her mom has always been her role model because she was on top of her game, always provided for her brothers and her, and never let her stress show. Her strength and dedication has inspired Haley to be the best version of herself. Okay, I'm Mrs. Kensing R. Smart, and our next student is Nathan Hinkle. Nate is a senior this year, and through his actions, he's consistently modeling how to contribute to his school community. Nate is a member of the varsity baseball team, where he hopes to serve as captain in the spring. Nate serves as one of our only three seniors who were selected as student section leaders for our fall sports teams. And in this newly created role, Nate has highlighted his commitment to the school community by modeling appropriate behavior at sporting events, including appropriate student themes for games, positive cheers for our home team. And he also made sure that all trash was collected at Byers Field and here at Normandy's Dome. Nate wanted to give credit to Mrs. Hunter and Miss Kuragiosis as they have been instrumental in supporting him during high school. And additionally, Nate says that his father is his biggest inspiration and does not know where he would be without his support and encouragement. Nate Hinkle. Okay, also tonight, we have Nicholas Hinkle. Nick, can you come on down? Nick is a 10th grade honors student who plans to attend college. He's unsure of his career, oh, sorry, career path at this time, but hopes to take advantage of the CCP program his junior year. As a freshman, Nick made varsity for the Normandy baseball team, and he has aspirations to play baseball in college. Nick loves being a Normandy invader. He says the people are what make his experience in high school so positive. Staff members, Mrs. McCarthy, Mr. Kessy, who he also refers to as Uncle D from a fun baseball trip in Florida, and Mr. Caricelli, our baseball coach, have been a great support to Nick during high school. Like his older brother Nate, Nick notes that his father's resilience is a big inspiration to him, and he also enjoys playing guitar, much like his father does, in his spare time. Nicholas Hinkle. Hard work beats talent when talent fails, I'm sorry, fails to work hard.
All right, next up tonight, we have Brittany Lazarovitz. I don't believe Brittany made it here tonight. Well, you did. Okay, or you just walked in. All right, Brittany, come on up. Brittany is a sophomore this year who embodies the definition of being resilient. She has all As and Bs in her classes and plans on playing softball at Normandy in the spring. She has worked at Stan Cato's since her eighth grade year and enjoys being part of the food prep team there. Her future plans consist of going to college in order to become an accountant and, of course, getting her driver's license soon. She is most proud of the fact that she was able to work at Stan Cato's in order to help her family recover from a house fire they suffered from a little over a year ago. She wanted to be able to help replace her own personal items and provide some money to help her little brother Dylan replace some of his as well. The person at school that she wanted to acknowledge helping her the most through her hard times is her counselor, Ms. Pejim. Brittany, congratulations. Well done. I am Mr. Gacka. I have the pleasure of introducing Adrian Torres. Adrian is a freshman this year at Normandy. He's a dedicated student, and he's a model student, and this is shown by his achievement in the classroom, earning all As and Bs this quarter. He's also a leader in our school. His favorite classes this year are English, Spanish, and Biology. One of his favorite things about Normandy is the dedication and work ethic he sees from his teachers. His plan for the rest of high school is to join our cosmetology program with the future goal to become a barber and open his own business. To Adrian, nothing is more important than family. His father is one of his idols, and he wants to follow him in the barber profession. I believe they have a name picked out possibly for a future barber shop, but I don't want to spoil what that is here. Finally, Adrian shared that one of his motivations for doing so well in school is to be a model for his younger brother as well as other students here at Normandy. We are truly lucky to have Adrian here at NHS. Okay, congratulations to our families. Now is, I think that's appropriate, let's give a round of applause. Thank you also to the Normandy administrative staff for representing all of your faculty in those presentations. We certainly appreciate the work that you invested into it. Families, now is a socially appropriate time to leave. You are certainly welcome to stay if you'd like, but we anticipate that you have some other things to do tonight. Then listen to us with some formal board proceedings. So, thank you again for joining us, and congratulations to your students and to your family.
Thank you for coming.
Next, I would like to thank all of our voters. We were very excited to see the returns as they came in on Tuesday night. Certainly, many of us waited for that 11% that we kept seeing and kept seeing and kept seeing on the Kyoga County Board of Elections website to ever change, but when it did, we were very happy to celebrate a victory. We passed with approximately 57% margin, 57 to 43% for the renewal. We were really, quite frankly, with all of the difficult decisions we've had to make and some of the controversy around some of those decisions, very happy to come out with a 57 to 43 verdict. We have said all along that Issue 12 was not a new tax. It is not a tax increase, and certainly our Parma voters will recognize that as we move forward. If there is any change to your tax bill, it has nothing to do with our Parma schools. Issue 12 froze rates right where they were the first time that those issues passed. So, those were two emergency issues, 10-year emergencies, that we renewed, and we again thank our Parma voters for that. We also will welcome soon three new board members, Mrs. McTaggart, Ms. Kerpik, and Ms. Kohar, and we look forward to working with them when they begin their terms in January. We also know that that means that we have to say a sad goodbye to two of our current board members, Mrs. Bratz and Mrs. Schwark, and we certainly have enjoyed collaborating and working with them, and we certainly will have some more remarks as the year progresses. But we do look forward to our new partners that we look forward to working with in January. So, that was our election. We do have some very exciting news, and today, if you noticed, it was very crowded in the parking lot because this is a career tech open house day at Normandy. And very appropriate to that is some news that we received approximately three or four weeks ago, but we had to wait to announce it, and Mrs. Plageman will describe that news and also why we had to wait.
Good evening, President Vaughn, board members, Dr. Smilek, and our community. I am Kristin Plageman, and I oversee the career and technical education programs for the Parma City School District. Governor Dewine allocated in his biennial budget $200 million for career tech expansion and renovation. Ninety career tech planning districts in the state were eligible to apply. Fifty-nine applied and 35 were awarded. I am pleased to announce that Parma City School District was awarded $4.16 million for the expansion for the expansion of our carpentry and auto collision program here at Normandy High School. So, we have to have our project completed by September of 2026. We are going to begin all the final preparations in working with the teachers and our architects and our other district leaders, and we're hoping to start breaking ground early this summer and hopefully getting it all done this summer, or it could possibly be in two phases. So, we'll make sure that I relay all that up-to-date information. So, thank you, and are there any questions from the board for me? No? Well, thank you very much, and I am going to leave to go back to our career tech open houses. All right? Thank you so much.
She's not going to leave back yet, though, because we have to say a few nice words about her.
Oh, okay.
If anybody has been a part of our school district for any amount of time, you know the dedication and talent that Ms. Plageman invests into our career tech programs. You know how successful they are. When we project our school report card, you see the amazing results that we consistently get. If you've walked through our schools or seen any programs in action, you know about the quality education that we provide, and Ms. Plageman leads all of that. Certainly, she has very talented, dedicated teachers along with her, but she is really the top of that umbrella, and she unites all of those programs. We are very excited for the award. We knew that when we moved into two high schools. We certainly know what our footprint is now for the foreseeable future, and we look forward to making improvements as we can, as we can find grant money, as we can allocate permanent improvement money. And grant money takes dedication to even get, and Ms. Plageman's dutiful activities in completing the applications were able to secure $4.1 million facilities for our kids. Thank you, Ms. Plageman, and if we can give a round of applause.
Thank you.
She also wants those built tomorrow. When she saw the deadline of 2026, she's like, "We're doing it this summer, though." That's happened this summer, so we're excited to the progress that we're going to see. Before we do my presentation, I just also want to mention that next Thursday night at 6:30, also here at Normandy, we will be meeting, and this is sort of an effort. Mrs. Sebastian is here. She has certainly been a partner with our district for a lot of years, and we look forward to partnering with her in this effort. The effort is called Concerned Citizens for Public Education, and the idea is that we need to call attention to the detrimental effects of recent legislation, potential detrimental effects of recent legislation from Columbus on specifically marginalized or some type of disadvantaged population. Certainly, students with disabilities is a primary concern, but we also have concerns about when you really see through, really, the proliferation of vouchers and some of the changes from ODE to the Department of Education and Workforce. What impact does that have on students still in our public schools? We want to take a deep look at that. We want to really involve as many citizens as possible to help us, to explore and to talk about their own experiences. And so, that is next Thursday night at 6:30 here at the Normandy Auditorium, I'm sorry, at the Normandy Media Center. We have had some social media. We will have, we will continue to have social media for that, and we hope to help to educate some folks because we cannot become just the alternative school, and that is sort of the fear of what could happen if we continue to see expansion of dedication of public resources to private enterprises. With that... Several weeks ago, we administered a survey via School Messenger. And our objective in administering this check-in, we called it, was really to say, we know that, you know, folks can email me, they can email their principal, their teacher, whoever they might have concerns about, but we also know that often, you know, people take to social media. We would ask people who turn to social media as a first recourse really to take the time to contact, you know, a school administrator or a school teacher or whoever a concern might be about. But we also know that that still happens. We can ask a lot of things. Often, Facebook is seen as a place to sort of deposit your concerns. So, we sent this survey really to see, you know, what, we know we see some voices on Facebook, and we know we see, we get some emails from time to time, but what really is the pulse of our community in terms of a parent perspective, and how do they really feel about our schools? So, we administered this October 1st, actually, I think it was a little bit later, October 5th, and the goal was simply this, improve transparency throughout our communities. We've always talked about this. Certainly, we have town hall meetings. That's always an outlet for people to come and participate and share concerns or ask questions. We certainly have board meetings where we have public comments available at the end. But we wanted one more outlet to hear from parents, one more outlet to say, you know, how do you really feel about what's happening in your child's classroom and your child's school? Obviously, you see our other two goals as well, improving student achievement, practicing fiscal responsibility. But essentially, this was designed around the goal to continue to improve transparency in our communities. Just some nuts and bolts. On October 5th, we emailed this to parents via School Messenger. It is a little bit of a weakness of our system. We don't have a way to separate out email addresses and, you know, send you two if you have two children right now. So, we asked parents, you know, it's one per family, and obviously, to choose one of your children that you're talking about and relaying your experiences. That is a weakness in a system that we look to upgrade at some point, but that was the system that we had, and we wanted to make sure we got the survey out. We received 526 responses, which admittedly is a little bit low. We would have liked to see more families participate, and so we'll have to do a better job of sort of marketing that and soliciting because we would like to hear from as many parents as possible. This is a pre-check, and it actually said that on the top of the Google form that we completed or that we sent to folks. A pre-check means we will actually follow up with the same survey next June at the end of the school year so that we can again see how things are going for our families and for our students. Obviously, the goal is that some of the concerns we identified, we want to make improvements. And we want, you know, there were some, and you'll see in a second, it was a 1 to 5 rating scale. One was, you know, completely disagree with the notion that my kid's having a good experience. We want to move that, obviously. And so, we're going to monitor this data, and we think that more that people see this and know that we actually are acting on this, our hope is that we will get a higher participation rate. I think, you know, even reading through some of the comments, people didn't think, you know, that this meant anything, that we were just doing it to check a box. I promise you that we read through these. I read through all of the comments. Our senior leadership team read through the comments. Our principals read through the comments. Our principals shared the comments with their building leadership teams. So, this was a systematic approach to really looking at what the feedback said. We only asked three questions from sort of a rating scale perspective, and we did that because you could come up with 1,000 questions. It was really difficult to say. We want a little bit of clear data points, but we also want people to feel free to tell us everything. And you can't really capture everything in a lot of different questions without making that survey pretty overwhelming. So, we wanted, you know, if you just wanted to complete the multiple choice section, that was fine. Again, they were rating scales 1 through 5. We hope that you did the comments because I think that's where you really get some of the richer data, but we wanted to just have a few succinct questions. So, the first was really sort of an approval rating, just like politicians do. I approve of the experiences that the school district has provided to my student this school year. We were really pleased that 77.6% of our parents rated that as a 4 or 5. That meant 4 was an agree, 5 was a strongly agree, you know, 3 would be neutral, and then if you were left of 3, you were saying something pretty negative there. The next was, my student participates in meaningful learning experiences during their school day, so that's really sort of a question about the curriculum and instruction that we provide, what happens, you know, in terms of lessons and activities in the classroom. And again, see a very high remark, 73.3% of our parents responded that they are very pleased with the learning experiences that their children are participating in. The last was more about the learning climate. So, obviously, you see, you know, overall approval, then you see the learning experiences, and now it's climate. My student's school provides a safe, positive learning environment, 70.4%. So, the interesting piece was that 70.4% was the lowest, and yet you see an awful lot of people that rated it a 5. The plurality was clearly the 41.9%. So, we know that, you know, climate, especially, and we did break this out by school for our principals, especially when you get into our secondary schools, can be a challenge. Middle school is always a challenge. That's where you saw some of our lower remarks. And again, our principals followed up with that, and we'll talk about that shortly. We also, again, we wanted to see, you know, more than just those, you know, those quick rating points. What did parents think? What would they explain to us? We wanted them to really elaborate upon the answers they provided at first. So, in terms of strengths, communication really emerges as a strength, and that was really clear. I mean, you've got 66, a high plurality in terms of comments. Now, when I say communication, again, we ask people to elaborate as much as they want, and so I went through and collated, and, you know, if it was, hey, my teacher communicates really well, boom, that was a communication tally mark. My principal communicates really well, boom, that was a tally mark. Anything that said communications is a strength, you know, that went there. Teachers and staff, I've always said that our teachers and staff are revered in our community, and we continue to see that. It almost does not matter what the study is, what the data point might be. Teachers and staff always emerge as a very clear highlight of what we offer here in our Parma schools. The environment, you see 24. The STEM program continues to get remarks when we do survey people. That goes back to, you know, my first year, actually. My first year, when we did sort of a SWOT analysis, I remember people loved the STEM program. We've been able to grow the STEM program. We didn't have, before we started here in 2018, we didn't have STEM education in middle school. We now have it, and in fact, this week, when I was doing walkthroughs at our middle school, at Shiloh Middle School, I happened to walk into Project Lead the Way STEM class where they were actually dissecting sheep brains. I had no idea we were doing that in middle school. The class is actually Medical Detectives. It's a 12-week class that our middle school students take, and they were dissecting actual sheep brains. It's a very impressive offering, especially at a middle school level, and we're proud of our STEM program and glad that people are recognizing it. Family activities was noted as a strength and a gifted program, too. Certainly, there are other strengths that were noted, but if they were sort of one-offs, I only listed the ones that came in, you know, five times or more. Interestingly enough, because communication was cited as a strength, it was also cited as a weakness. And so, that's something that we know we have to be more systemic about. We know that, you know, we have some all-stars in terms of how they communicate, and then some others that we just, we're not getting enough out into our parents' hands, and so that's something that we have to work at as a district. Other students become distractions. So, if they were mentioning, you know, my kid's trying to sit here, but some of the other kids aren't behaving, I noted it that way. That was our second largest in terms of a plurality. Transportation, which was not a surprise, was definitely, you know, in the top of the concerns there. Supervision in common areas, bullying, which sort of actually go hand in hand. Traffic, now, this is a little bit early. I think some of those issues we've eradicated in some way, but I know we certainly have progress to make. In terms of traffic, we do have some permanent improvement plans to open some driveways and to provide some more access, but those are processes. We can't snap our fingers and do those. The weapons policy was cited, and we know that. We've owned that on TV and print everywhere, that, you know, that was a botched rollout of what we really tried to accomplish. So, tonight, we have another step in working towards clarity in terms of who we want to actually be able to carry a firearm on our school district property to maintain safety and to be one more resource. And we also understand that even that is still upsetting some folks. It was a very polarizing issue, very controversial. So, what are we doing with this data? First, again, we, everything we do, it's a system. We don't do things as a central office by ourselves. We work through that process where we share the data with our principals. When we talked, I was so happy. I didn't mandate anything to principals. I said, "Take a look at your data," and, you know, some of this stuff is what we call low-hanging fruit. You can make one phone call or send one email, and you clarify something for a family, and boom, you've taken care of their concerns. concern, and so that I asked them to do, but then beyond that, you know, there were some larger concerns. Bullying isn't something that you're going to make one phone call and fix. You can certainly make a phone call and start to have those conversations, but it's more of a global issue. So, our principals were phenomenal, they contacted individual students, they contacted individual families. I talked to Ms. Andruszewski, for instance, at Valley Forge, she found about four to five comments about Valley Forge students who were Parma senior parents, or Parma senior students a year ago, who weren't quite fitting in. She said she called them down, she made sure that they were going to participate in some type of extracurricular, whether it be a sport or an activity, so that would give them more of a connection, and then just ask them, you know, what else do you need, what else can we do for you? And I love that, that personal touch that she implemented. That was just one example. A lot of our principals talked about how they, you know, contacted parents right away, because they, they care about this, too. They want to make sure that, you know, our stakeholders are satisfied with what the product is. I will send this summary to families as well. Again, part of, I think, how we can get more participation is to institutionalize this. If we do it once, and we don't do it again for three years, nobody's going to care, and they're going to say, you didn't listen the first time. So, we want to make sure, we want to, we want people to see that this is part of what we do now, this is part of our culture, we want to hear from you in this forum, and so we'll send this out. We will review communication concerns with our enrollment and community relations team to see if, again, there's anything specific that we can do. We do have a great communications team, it's taken us some time to get sort of, and actually, tonight, we'll have another step toward that, to get really some, some all-stars on that team, and we're very proud of that team, and we look forward to the growth of that team, and that's something that we can utilize those resources a little bit more strategically, based on some of the comments that we heard. I also personally, after tonight, and after the, you know, the next reading, it becomes policy, I'll email the families that had concerns about the weapons, just to, just to clarify, this is exactly what happened, here's where we are, here was, was the policy that we adopted. So again, trying to make sure that families understand, we actually took the time to read their comments, we care about what they said, and we're acting on it to make sure they are having the most positive possible experience here in our Parma schools. Any questions for me?
I do not, but that was very thorough. So, the, all the surveys, how many total were there? I didn't-
626.
626, alright. So, a lot of positive things come out, came out of the survey, yes?
Yeah, you know, it's, we always dwell on the negative, and that was, you know, in terms of, again, how do we act on this, I, I know I'm citing Ms. Andruszewski twice at Valley Forge, but I like what she did with the positives, too. She said, you know, when you get a survey, first thing you do is you look at negatives. She took all the positives, and she used that with her staff, because a lot of times, you've got to remind the staff that, you know, what you're doing is helping, it's making a difference for some kids, and, so yeah, we actually, you know, these were sort of the plurality of the strengths that we got.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Anybody else?
Sir?
Yeah, well, one question and one statement. On the first slide, the percentage is wrong. 67.6, just wanted to clarify that. If you look at the first slide, I approve of the experience. 31, 36, 67.
Okay.
That was it.
Apologize for that, I just added-
I just wanted to, because I know that, if somebody else pointed it out to you, you would be upset, that you didn't catch it, so I want, you know, try to help you out.
So you decided to do it very publicly, thank you.
(laughing)
Awesome.
Well, like, number one and number two, I'm assuming we know who all those people are, right?
Yes, they recorded an email address, that's correct.
Are we following up with them to ask them, if they can expound on why they answered that way, because it wasn't on the action thing, but I think that'd be really interesting to know, why do they feel that way, like, what specifically is making them feel that way, because even I don't feel that way, and, you know, I'm the most pessimistic person there is around here.
Yeah, a lot of them actually then commented, so, that, that was, you know, again, where they sort of enriched that data. I don't think anybody, and I can look back, but just off my memory now, I don't think anybody actually did a one or two and then didn't, didn't elaborate, so that was-
Oh, they did elaborate, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, cool. That's all I wanted, I was just curious.
I apologize for that.
If you say one or two on that, I mean, that's, you've got to have something that's really bothering you, and I'd like to know what, you know, they-
There were, you know, here's the thing, too, there were definitely some that kind of teed off on us, but I'd rather they tee off on us on a survey than, you know, they take, take to Facebook. I understand Facebook's a part of our society, but I don't go to Facebook, I don't join clubs, I don't, that's not, we want people to communicate with us, and so that, this was a forum to do that, so, yeah, there were some upset people, but we, we appreciate the feedback, we appreciate the candor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really glad you did this. I agree, you need more marketing to try to capture more families' input, but I think it's really important for them to have an opportunity to do this, and the comment section is really, I think, the most valuable part of that, because it gives you some real specifics on what's going on with those particular families in the buildings, and I think inviting them to make comments and kind of partner with us in terms of information. A lot of times, I don't think people realize, they have every opportunity to share information and be a partner in what goes on in our schools, so, I'm glad you're following up also with the ones that had comments, and especially that had some concerns, because that's, that's how these issues can be addressed. If people let you know about it, and then you can respond to it, and hopefully, make things better. If we don't know about some of these things, it's really hard to address them until sometimes it's a bigger problem than it needs to be. So, thanks for doing this, it'll be interesting to see at the end of the year, or, you know. I would also like to see them invited to continue to share their information, you know, this is a survey, it's a, you know, it's a reach-out at this point, but also for them to recognize that we're open to them contacting us anytime if they have any concerns or thoughts. We like good information, too, or positive things, like we saw tonight with the students, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? I said, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And that, those, that concludes Superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, so that brings us to communication with Mrs. Brodsky, but before you start, Dr. Smiley stole half my speech, so I can't, half of it's gone, so, but I do want to thank the voters. The voters for taking, doing your right to vote, and we appreciate the outcome of the, of the renewal levies, that was huge. But I do also want to lament that we'll be losing two of our, well, three, three of our board members in January. You don't get, you don't do this job without developing a relationship and a, is this, I don't know, I'm going to get overclamped. So anyway, so, they were great collaborators, I thought they were great people on the, on the board. I look, congratulations to Linda Kohar, Brittany Akirpeck, and Ashley McTaggart for winning their seats, and I looked forward to working with them and continuing to move this district forward. I do see that Ashley is here in the back, you want to stand up and wave, or, so people can see you? It's Ashley McTaggart. I don't see Linda or Brittany. But so, thank you, thank you for allowing, for stealing half my speech. Alright, so that, Mrs. Brodsky, what else you got for us?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Vine. A couple of things in communications, I know we've talked about it in the past, but a lot of PTA events this past couple of weeks, as the school year gets started, there's always a lot of big things happening, but in particular in relationship to Halloween, there were a lot of trunk-or-treat events, and a lot of fall festivals that students participated in and families participated in, so, that was a lot of fun, and they raised some funds for future activities during the school year, and really got things off to a nice start. Also, those of you that might be familiar with the PEA Food Drive, that's the Parma Education Association, our teachers that every year for, oh, I wish I knew how many years, many years, have had a food drive to help families in our community that may have some extra needs when it comes to feeding, and especially around the holiday time. So, the PEA Food Drive has been in effect, and it ends tomorrow, so if anybody has any donations that they would like to make, you can go to any of our schools, they're all collecting, and then next week, they'll be sorting everything out and distributing to the families that have been anonymously found in order to provide them with a lot of support in terms of food. Those, they give out a lot to each of the families, so, it's a really great service from PEA every year. And then, right here, in this room, on this stage, Normandy presented Arsenic and Old Lace last weekend. I was here, it was real cute, a lot of fun, clever, and a funny little production, so, the Normandy Kids did a great job, and another one of the many presentations that our arts department put on throughout the year, and Parma Valley Forge will be coming up, and there'll be more in the springtime, so, that's it, Mr. Vine, thank you.
That's it, alright, thank you so much. That brings us to our treasurer, who has a special forecast to share with us today.
Yes, before I get to the forecast, I would like to recognize Pam Barkowski. This is her last board meeting. She-[1281.26][1281.26](applause) She has been my secretary for six years since I've been here, I think she's been the board secretary for about 10 years. Thank her for her commitment to the district, she always makes sure everything goes smooth for the board meeting, she assists my department in all areas, she's definitely an ear to listen when in time of need. For some reason, she wants to spend more time with her three grandkids than come to board meetings, I don't understand.
I don't understand that.
Well, and she always tells me she's my work mom, to keep me in line, which I don't know if that's true. And, I'd like to call up Councilman Kuzmaw to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Nucio, members of the board. Pam, congratulations on your retirement. From the short time that I served on the school board, I know I would have been lost without you in the transition and learning everything, and I, I don't want to speak for the current board or for pass boards, but I think they also would be lost. So you're going to be a huge, huge loss to the district, but thank you so much for all the years, all the late nights, very late nights, all the phone calls, all the emails you put up with just for me, but for all of us, president board, pass boards. So I wanted to present this on behalf of Parma City Council, for all your years and dedication to our school district, we really appreciate you, and you're definitely going to be missed, Pam, thank
Yes, yes, absolutely. Pam, as long as we're doing this stuff, we're going to, very good. Can you come on up over here, so we can see you better? This guy feels kind of like, really high and mighty, like a judge. Hi.[1443.01][1443.01](laughing) So here's my favorite secretary in the, in the system right now. She really does, Kevin, that was probably about the epitome of correct of anything that, if it wasn't for this lady, we would not be this organized. My cheat sheet, just to make sure I have that down, what to do, how to do it, organizing our folders with information from the different schools, you know, I got a nice little note here from Greenbrier, I didn't see until today, and it was like, nice, it's stuck in my folder instead of in a piece of mailbox somewhere. But always, always a pleasure, she's always kind, always has kind words to say about everybody, and I, and I will definitely miss you.[1496.01][1496.01](inaudible) Alright, they are more important, but I know, like, we're your children anyway, but I know there's more to be said, so.[1508.47][1508.47](inaudible)
Oh, I thought I could get through this okay, darn it. Pam, I will let you know, Mr. Nucio, Pam started 18 years ago with the Board of Education, or almost 18, it's really close to that, and I don't think the public has the slightest understanding of how much this lady does. To make all of this happen, certainly, every single board meeting, but also in between, there's so much that goes on in terms of communications, and information, and guidance to us on things that we'd never be able to do without Pam. I mean, it's, it's just incredible how much work that she does on our behalf, and keeps Mr. Nucio in line, of course, as well, which is a task of great magnitude, but, I thank you for everything you've done. She's such a classy lady, she's so organized, she's so competent, she's so outstanding in so many ways, and much of what we do requires a great deal of confidence, and Pam is superb at maintaining that, and just over the years, she's, she's part of the family, she's part of the board with everything that she does, and we thank you over and over and over again. Can't imagine, I know Melissa's been in training for quite some time with Pam, so she'll do a fine job, but oh my God, will you be missed. It's, your impact, working with the board, impacts the entire district. You know, kids benefit because of the work that you do, teachers benefit because of the work that you do, every building benefits because of the work that you do, so thank you so very much. You are appreciated all the time, and I hope you know that. Thank you.
Can I, I know, I'm not a board member or John, but I always appreciated the ability to go to your office and come away with some type of wisdom, because you have seen so much in your time here, and some of the drama that I experienced, I think it's probably about 7% of, of, you know, the severity of what you experienced during your time here, I mean, I don't think we need to dredge up some of the past memories, but you've, you've seen some, some very intense proceedings in our school district, and so, for me, as, being new to Parma, to be able to just sit down sometimes and just, just literally spew my frustration and, you know, feelings, and you would so calmly just take it in and just help to center whatever thoughts I was having, and I always felt a million times better walking out of your office than I did walking in, and I think that that is really a testimony to somebody that, that makes an impact, so thank you.
I just wanted, Kevin was right, I would have been lost if, if you weren't there to greet me when I first got elected. How much you help us is so understated, nobody can really understand what you mean to all of us when we first win, and you're the first face that we see in the first phone call we get, and the help that we get from you. And, you yelled at me about wearing a helmet, so I haven't ridden this year because I told you I wasn't going to ride without one, so I just, I just stopped riding, so I didn't want to disappoint you, and you always yelled at me about smoking, and it's been one month and 28 days now because of you yelling at me, so, I knew that, well, I did that for my wife, but you're head is, you're always in my, in my mind when I think about it, the way you always yelled at me about that, so I appreciate you actually caring about everybody the way you do.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. So, the whirlwind that was, you know, the appointment and coming on and literally not knowing, you know, just knowing I wanted to help, but not knowing how to actually be a functioning board member, and then getting sworn in, cameras go off, huge book binder, like, here, 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 this is this, write your name how you want it signed, do this- this, do this, do this, do this, to the point where I felt like, oh wow, okay, like, nobody knows how to do this. And there's about a year learning curve, right, before you finally actually know what's going on. But the way that you keep everybody in line with what their job is, what it is not, how to do it to the best of our abilities, how you remember and ask about my kids and their names and my husband, and look at me, you look at me, because if I'm going to cry, you have to cry too. But I just, I'm glad to call you a friend and I'm very grateful for that above all. And I just really appreciate just the comfort you've given me. And he's right, I mean, you come in and have a conversation with you and the day is much better and everything's fine. You make, you're a safe space and you make everything fine. So, thank you.
You're not done yet. All right, I'll be real quick. I've been on here for 30 days, but you made me feel like I've been here for two decades. And I can verify everything, everyone said is very true. And I appreciate your professionalism and your friendliness, making me feel at home from day one. So, I hope you enjoy your time with your family, well deserved.
Thank you.
So, I've enjoyed my time with the board. I wish everyone had been here last week and I asked you to help me. Thank you.
Okay, the reason everyone came is for the five-year forecast, I assume? So, right now, we are positive for years one, two, and three, which is fiscal year 24, 25, and I don't know what happened there. Okay, we're positive for years 24, 25, and 26, which is what now it's called, the Department of Education and Workforce, which I'll refer to as DE, instead of ODE. And they'll look to see on line 15.01, which is not up here, but they'll look to see if you're positive for the first three years. If you are, then they're happy, but if you turn negative, then they'll put you in precaution, pre-fiscal caution, which means you have to come up with a plan to get rid of the negative. Last time we had money approved with 2011 and we definitely need a new levy. So, this is the five-year forecast and as I mentioned, I can't, I don't know if you can see the lines in blue, the one, the second last column where it's minus 18 million. At next time, next year at this time, that will move up a year and if we're still negative, then they're going to put us in fiscal precaution. This is what, the requirements, I just put the revised code section why we have to do it. Every year they require us to do it in May, I'm sorry, November 1st, November is the original, and then an update in May. And it's the general fund, which is what we have, we don't have a debt service fund, so we don't have to worry about that. The reason why we do the five-year forecast is to engage the community and for planning and for the Department of Education workforce, so they can monitor how school districts are doing. Before we get into numbers, of course, there's always a snapshot in time and lots of things change. We could have insurance go up, insurance go down depending on different factors. We could have hiring people or we lay off people or we get more money. There's a lot of different things that could happen that change the forecast. Forecast is into two parts, revenue and expenditures, and of course, the main sources for revenue are property taxes and state funding. Property taxes, we get most of our money from there. The forecast, we anticipate growth to be about 2.2%, but expenditures are going up close to 4%, so if that continues, our fund balances go down, which is why years four and five are negative in the five-year forecast. Also, ESR, which we received $32 million over the four-year period, that money is running out after this year. We have to use all our money by September 20, September of 2024, or we just lose it. We've been using this to offset salaries for the last three or four years, so that money, all has to come back to the general fund, which increases our expenditures. This is a graph that's showing if the levy did not pass, what situation we would be in. And of course, as Dr. Smilek said and Mr. Vaughn, we thank voters for renewing our levies. In my notes and in the forecast, I keep it as if the levy had not passed because it has not been certified by the Cogu County Board of Elections yet. So, our general fund revenues, state funding contributes about 26%, 27%, and property taxes are over 73%. Oops, wrong way. Our local funding, we always would like to have 60 days cash, which we do now. We spend $12 million a month, so we want about $24, $25 million in reserves, but as you can see on the graph, we get further into fiscal year 27 and 28, we do not have two months of revenue, two months of reserves. This is our local funding, you can see the one on the red on the left is our property taxes and the other one is our state taxes. So, we're definitely dependent on property taxes for our funding. There's challenges to the school district. House Bill 33 did pass for two more years, but of course, it's a biennial budget, so after this two-year period, we don't know if the next budget will be approved by the legislator. They could change the formula, they could get rid of the formula, they could come up with a new one, so there's always uncertainty in our funding. House Bill 126 was devastating to us because we used to be able to get over $1 million by filing complaints against property tax owners, mostly businesses, and then we would settle with them and they'd give us direct payments. Well, the legislator said that's no longer legal, so we lose about $1 million a year on that. Challenges to our revenue, of course, ESR is ending in September of '24, which hurts us because all those expenditures are coming back to the general fund. And also, there's something called the 20 mil floor, which is, can be very confusing to people, so I won't get into it, but they want to change the 20 mil floor, which could possibly change our long-term planning of levies. Our expenditures, wages and salary, salaries and benefits are going to be our largest expenditure because we're a school district, we're a people industry. 87.5% is our number, which is quite high. Most districts are between 80 and 82, 83, somewhere in that area, so we're quite high. Purchase Services is second or third highest, and that's money that we've paid for different charter schools and STEM and other scholarships. General fund by object, of course, salaries and benefits are going to be the largest, you see red in the blue. And then there's, so all of our expenditures, about 12 and a half percent is not salaries and benefits, so that's hard to control our spending when we're that high expenditures. So, what do we need to do? What decisions are being made? We definitely need a new levy. How much do we need? When do we need it? I mean, I always say the sooner the better, we need it. Are we going to have any additional consolidation? I know we went through major consolidation, closing three schools. And are we planning on new construction or new bond levies? There's all kinds of uncertainties we have. Any questions for the board, from the board, I should say?
My one question, you kind of answered, it's like, you said sooner the better, I was like, when would we have to pass a new levy, new money levy? Before we go into fiscal caution?
Definitely before we go into new caution. When you pass the new levy, the money would start in January. So, if we pass something in May, we're not getting the money like till January. We're not getting it for another seven months.
Okay.
If you pass it in November, it also starts in January. So, if we're negative in '26, you got to go at least a year ahead because you're only collecting half of the year money upfront, just because they're on calendar years and we're on fiscal year. So, obviously, the sooner the better. I would like May of '24, but of course, it's a decision the board has to make.
You're talking about November '24?
May or November.
May, you said May.
March.
March, it would be March though.
March, it would be March, yeah, it's presidential election. So, the sooner the better, but that's, we have three new board members and that's discussions we have to have with them, so.
Right, very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
So, the sooner you ask, the less it could be? Or is it going to be the same amount no matter when you try to ask?
It all depends what you're trying to achieve. If you want to achieve longer longevity on it, you'd have to have higher number. If you just want to do it, eliminate two years, the amount's going to be smaller, but it's all turn, depends on what your plan is, would, how much, when do you want to go back to the voters after, if this passes, when's the next time you want to go back?
Right, right, okay. Very good. Anybody else?
That's it, we're off the hook here. All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for this, Mr. Nucio.
All right, at this point, we open a meeting to publicly address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any? None? Okay, so we don't do that. Okay, Charlie, do we have any updates or unfinished business?
We do, we should proceed with actually voting these down this evening because we then bring them back with some of the revisions that we talked about in committee. The revisions, just to be transparent, are very innocuous, they're just clarifications. I'll go through them when we get to the policies. Tonight is only the first reading, but even to get to that first reading, we need to just sort of clear this item and so we should actually reject these at this point.
Okay, so, Mr. Short, can you please present the unfinished business for the board's consideration?
I move to adopt policies previously submitted, which are held in second reading per PCSD by law 0131, functions, approval of the following revised policies, Resolution 2023-09-431.01, approval of the following revised policies, policy 1617 weapons, policy 3217 weapons, policy 4217 weapons as amended.
Second. We're supposed to vote this down?
We're supposed to vote it down.
All right, we have to vote though.
We should vote no.
Okay, we are voting no, okay, because I didn't see it.
Yes.
All right, so are you voting on each one of them separate?
Oh, I can.
No, we get to vote on, we have to vote on this one and then there's the next resolution.
Okay, yeah.
Pam?
All right, so, we have a motion of a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-431.01, the approval of the following revised policies.
Second, oh no, I have another second.
Where do you have a motion of a second?
We had a motion, no, I said we had a second.
Right, you're supposed to.
Here we go.
I'm looking forward to it. Mrs. Swark?
No.
Mr. Ruda?
No.
Mrs. Bratz?
No.
Mr. Stryker?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
No, Resolution 2023-09-431.01 has failed. We have one more.
Move to adopt policies previously submitted, which are held in second reading per PCSD by law 0131, functions, approval of the following new policies, Resolution 2023-09-432.01, approval of the following new policies, policy 7217, weapons as amended.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-432.01, approval of the following new policies. Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Swark?
No.
Mr. Ruda? No. Mrs. Bratz?
No.
Mr. Stryker?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
No, Resolution 2023-09-432.01 has failed. All right, thank you, Mr. Swark.
You're welcome, Mr. Vaughn.
All right, so this brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, there are no items under curriculum this evening, so unless another board member has something to discuss, it concludes.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bratz. Business, Mr. Ruda?
There are no items under business for tonight.
Oh.
So, unless anybody has anything to discuss, that's all we have for business.
All right, thank you, sir. Finance, Mrs. Bratz?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, yes. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-11585, approval to renew the agreement with ISOLD benefits to manage and administer a flexible spending account.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion of a second to adopt Resolution 2023-11-585. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Swark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-11-585 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-11586, adoption of updated 2023, 2024 budget estimate and fiscal projections for fiscal years 2025, 2026, 2027, and 2028.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to adopt Resolution 2023-11-586. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Swark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-11-586 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-11587, approval to enter into a contract with MetLife for employee life benefit.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to adopt Resolution 2023-11-587. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Swark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-11-587 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-11588, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to adopt Resolution 2023-11-588. Any questions or comments from the board?
There's a large appropriation number up there, so I'll talk about that. It's Fund 507, which is our ESR fund, and I said, I mentioned in the five-year forecast that the ESR is going away in September of 2024. This is the remaining funds that we have left to spend before then, so we're appropriating. We have some other money, over $7 million already appropriated, and this is the remaining part that's not appropriated, so that's why it's spending $2.5 million. Does anybody have questions on that?
Yes, sir, that's a, because that's a huge number. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Swark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-11-588 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-11589, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to adopt Resolution 2023-11-589. Any questions or comments from the board?
Steve, I know you want to make a comment on that.
Holy smokes. Absolutely, Skolina Foundation, $10,000, that's great. Thank you so, so much. Not to be outdone by the paint sticks there for middle school STEM program and the $60 for elementary, for the principal's account. Thank you so much, but anytime that you, I'm sorry, again, I was talking up that way, wasn't I? So, anytime that we get any kind of donations to the schools, we certainly appreciate it. So, we thank you and thank you from the bottom of our hearts. It's very nice that you think of us, think of the Parma schools when you think about donating. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Anybody else? I said thank you like 50 times. times. Roll call there, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-eight-nine has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss this evening, that will conclude finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Uh, unfortunately, I'll write back at you with legislation.
Okay.
You have anything?
I will add my thanks to, uh, the community for the passage of the levy. Um, it makes a huge difference, it's, uh, nearly ten percent of our operating budget, and is a critical amount of funding for our schools, and it was so, um, nicely passed by the community. We appreciate their investment in their local schools, and, uh, thanks again for that. The only other thing I'll mention this evening is that the board is going, uh, uh, or part of the board is going to Columbus this weekend for the Capitol Conference, and that is the annual conference of the Ohio School Boards Association. Uh, I will be the official, uh, business, uh, representative for the board, but there is very light business this year, so that is, uh, uh, different than some years. Uh, we'll be represented at, uh, at the conference by Mr. Vaughn, uh, Mrs. Schwark, myself, Dr. Smylek, um, Dr. Schneider, Mr. Nusio, anybody else going that that you know of, Dr. Smylek?
No, that's all.
Okay, so we'll all be going. There are lots of, uh, great general sessions with, uh, interesting keynote speakers, and many, many workshops that, uh, we will attend and bring back information about. Uh, this is one of the largest conferences on education in the entire nation every year, and there's also a trade show where there are many vendors there that will, uh, provide information about their products, that, uh, will, you know, be able to find out and, uh, make connections with, sometimes, you know, it might be a new football field, which we got already this year, fortunately, we don't need that, but that's just an example of what one of the vendors, uh, do. They also do food, food service, books, all kinds of different things. Um, but, uh, it's a really valuable experience and opportunity for us to get a lot of good information. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I do, I do know that when I go down to OSBA, and I, I try to attend, uh, at least three workshops a day. Uh, usually stuff with e- either legislation, or working with a superintendent, or working with a treasurer, different topics like that. Uh, and then I do spend a little time walking around the vendors and getting my free little cushy balls to throw at, which was good when I was teaching, but not so much now. Uh, just throwing by my wife. Um, but I do come away a little wiser when I come from that, uh, that meeting. Uh, also, so that's it for you?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you.
We'll conclude legislation.
Thank you. Uh, so this brings us aside to human resources, Mrs. Schwark.
I move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three-one-one, I'm sorry, dash one-one-dash-five-nine-zero, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-zero. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-zero has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-one, acceptance of certified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-one. Any questions or comments from the board? Charlie, is usually these people come in June, our meeting?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-one has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-two, approval of revised supplemental salary schedule two-thousand-twenty-three to two-thousand-twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-two. Uh, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-two has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three dash, uh, one-one-dash-five-nine-three, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with frontline education for electronic time and attendance, applicant tracking, absence and substitute management, and HRMS with recruiting and hiring solution systems.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-three. Any questions or comments from the board?
Uh, yeah, I, I do. Um, I just wanna clarify why we picked this particular vendor.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate, uh, the question, uh, Mr. Stryker. Uh, this vendor, uh, first of all, it's really recognized as an industry leader, um, in, in managing all of the volumes and volumes and volumes of data that are involved in human resources. Secondly, and probably more importantly, actually, we already have a very positive relationship with frontline, they already manage much of the system. Uh, the reason that we have to upgrade, and it is an upgrade, uh, the, the, right now, there's, there's two data entry points, there's human resources and then there's payroll, and they don't actually speak with each other, so we, we have to do the archaic process of entering information twice, which, while it seems like it would be, you know, kinda seamless, it, it's not. I mean, we've approximately sixteen-hundred employees with a lot of different variables within each employee. Um, so the, the double data entry is, is a problem, but PeopleWorks itself, uh, which is the other system that we use, is, is really an archaic system. Um, PeopleWorks is, is actually expiring, uh, there won't even be a PeopleWorks within a couple of years. I, I say this facetiously, but not all that much of an exaggeration that we may be their last client, actually. Um, it, it really is an, an antiquated system, and so we did speak with frontline, in fact, when we talked about this at the, uh, finance committee, Mr. Stryker actually had a very good suggestion of going back to them, there was an original price, we went back to them and negotiated a longer contract but saved money, uh, approximately forty thousand dollars, so I appreciate, you know, the, the, the comment and the suggestion, um, to renegotiate. We've gone back to them twice, and actually both times they, we were able to get a little bit of a, a discount, so this really will be a, a step into the twenty-first century, which I know sounds sorta cliche, but I'm telling you, PeopleWorks itself is, it, it's like, you know, the old green screens on computers. It, it, it's really dated, and so, uh, w- we need this, uh, to, to function efficiently, uh, between our, our human resources department and our payroll system. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? No, anybody else? No. Uh, roll call, Mr. Nusio, please.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-three has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-four, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments slash replacements, acceptance of classified resignations, confirmation of classified changes, and confirmation of classified stipends.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-four. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs., Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-four has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-five, authorization to release from employment during probationary period, period classified employees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-five. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-five has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-six, confirmation of administrative specialists for community outreach.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-six. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can read his, uh, biography before or after, which would you prefer, sir?
I think we should probably vote on him first.
Works for me.
Right, okay. All right, so no comments or questions, so Mr. Nusio, please.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-six has been approved, and the floor is yours, sir.
So we've had a little bit of a hole in our, in our, um, operation since, uh, Mr. Schuler took his talents to a different school district, we recognized him at the last board meeting, so I wanna recognize Mrs. Cooney up there, pinch hitting, and doing as good of a job for Mr. Schuler as she possibly can, she's now ducking, doesn't want any recognition. But, uh, when Mr. Schuler informed us of, uh, his intended departure, we began to search for, um, a replacement, knowing that, you know, there's many functions in the district that we want to film and document, uh, for our, 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 our community. And we're very lucky, uh, to find, at the reference of Ms. Allison Coakley, referred Mr. Jack Tibbetts to us, I'm gonna read, uh, about him, and then just share a few of my own comments. Jack Tibbetts comes to the Parma City School District with over fifteen years' experience in all aspects of visual communications and marketing. During his career, he produced and directed local commercials and video pieces highlighting the good news in our community. He's had the privilege to work with local, local organizations such as Cleveland State University, Highland Software, Crestmont School District, and the city of Parma, just to name a few. Most recently, Jack has been an audiovisual engineer at the Cleveland Clinic, and has hands-on experience designing and installing a wide range of audiovisual suites and spaces, including in operating rooms. He is most proud of his daily work, oh, that's the next line, on operating rooms, and being able to collaborate with some of the best medical providers in the world on their AV needs. He also directs live events for the leadership team at the Cleveland Clinic. Jack attended the Berea City School District and Bowling Green State University, he's proud to be from Parma, his mom was a Parma music teacher, and his father was a Parma firefighter. He is most looking forward to helping share the good news and great things that are taking place daily at the PCSD with the community. We are extremely excited to welcome Jack. I, I have, uh, described him, you know, some folks are camera people, and that's great, that's a necessary skill and not one that everybody possesses, there's a lot of technicality within that, that people can't even begin to grasp. Uh, but Jack is a, is, is really a PR person who happens to have the technical skills as well. I think you will notice a significant upgrade as we begin to work with Mr. Tibbetts. I referenced before, I think we have an all-star team at this point in our communications and enrollment and registration team, and we look forward to the great work they're gonna do, um, as a trifecta of professionals. Mr. Tibbetts, do you wanna say anything to, uh, the board this evening?
That's a good word. Yeah, you're welcome.
Nailed it, Jack.
Welcome, and, uh, we look forward to working with you. Excellent.
You can see his communication skills.
Yeah.
Running on display right there.
Once, once you get to know him, he'll be a little bit more verbose, this is, uh, this is shot just right now. Just kidding.
All right, so.
Who's reading that?
Oh, unless, unless anybody has anything further to discuss, uh, about human resources, that will conclude. Human resources.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'll go right back to you, the policies.
Here I go.
All right.
I move to adopt resolution two-zero-two-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-seven, approval of the following revised policies, policy five-one-three-six, personal communication devices, policy five-four-six-zero, graduation requirements, policy seven-four-three-four, use of tobacco on school premises, policy eight-three-zero-five, information security, and policy nine-one-six-zero, public attendance at school events.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-seven. Any questions or comments from the board? Before we vote on it, uh, Mr. Ruda, is this all Neola stuff?
Yeah, this is.
Again?
Yes.
Continuation, yeah, thank you. It's my favorite word, Neola. All right, uh, Mr. Nusio?
My second favorite word.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Stryker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two-thousand-twenty-three dash one-one-dash-five-nine-seven has been approved.
And as Dr. Smylek shared earlier in the meeting, uh, the following policies are being reintroduced for their first reading after changes were made when they were sent back to committee for further review. It's gonna be the first reading for the following revised policies, policy one-six-one-seven, three-two-one-seven, and four-two-one-seven, all three are weapons. Um, and then also, as he shared earlier in the meeting, the following policies are being reintroduced for their first reading after changes were made when they were sent back to committee for further review, first reading of the following new policies, policy seven-two-one-seven, weapons.
Can I, um, elaborate upon the changes? So ve- very minimal changes, and, um, you know, again, we were very committed to, uh, reversing the, uh, lack of transparency when we began this process by being overly transparent, so I'm gonna go through the changes, um, very minimal, again, we had, uh, used the term "security guards," we changed that to "security personnel." Uh, we added just a, sort of a clause about how folks would get certified, we'd already talked about the qualifications they needed to be certified, uh, but we just added a clause about the process, we said the individual will secure recommendation from the superintendent, who will present to the board in the executive session, which is allowable because we're talking about security, the reasons for the disposition, including all previous performance evaluations and the results of all relevant background and mental health checks. So we added that entire clause just to, so people know what we're weighing, uh, before we would certify someone. Uh, we changed, where we had said up to twenty-four hours of, of training, uh, previous to being armed, we changed that to a minimum of twenty-four hours. We had said up to, uh, eight hours of, uh, annual requalification training, we changed that to a minimum. Uh, and again, emphasizing the fact that, you know, that there's a state requirement, but then we, we obviously have our own local requirements as well, and so that, that's why we changed to a minimum instead of up to. Uh, we also wanted to clarify that the Board of Education will obtain the holster, uh, that those who are armed will carry. It is a level-three holster, that is not changed, we just wanted to clarify, uh, who was purchasing that. And then we talked about conspicuously posting notices at main entrances of a school, and it had been at each entrance, and that, you know, again, there's, our high schools have probably a hundred-and-twenty-four doors on the first floor, so, uh, we're talking about main entrances of school, um, and, and areas where visitors are required to report, so the, the visitors entrance, the main entrance will have these signs.
Thank you. Um, right, so.
Unless, unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policies.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Schwark. Uh, any information requested by board members? Okay, at this point, we open a meeting to publicly address the board with comments and/or concerns. We have one such request. Uh, requests to be heard forums were completed and submitted in person to an administrative secretary prior to the start of the meeting. All statements shall be directed to the board president. As per policy one-zero, uh, zero-one-six-nine-point-one, comments that are repetitive, obscene, disparaging, abusive, irrelevant, and/or comments that constitute a threat will not be tolerated, and the speaker will be asked to stop speaking and/or to leave the meeting. Uh, please know that various board policies exist which set forth processes and procedures to be used in investigating and addressing personnel issues, and it cannot be addressed in public. As per board policies, we may not be able to respond directly or address some issues at this time. If information is not readily If information is not readily available, we will respond at our next regular meeting. Three minutes has been a lot per speaker. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, so would... Tammy Sebastian, come to the microphone. Haven't said that name in a while.
Tammy Sebastian, sixty-eight, for Team Riviere. Can you not start my three minutes, because I want to say something to Pam? Um, so I also, um, think Pam should really deserve an award for all the public records requests that she had to put in for me. Um, that deserves her own award. Um, and she not only worked graciously with you all, um, and, uh, I think Cindy Bratz was saying, you know, she's seen a lot in this district, and no matter what the feelings were, she treated everybody with dignity and respect, including me, and I appreciate that, Pam. Um, so now you can start my three minutes. Um, so, uh, Mr. Vaughn, uh, Dr. Smylek stole some of mine too, so don't worry. So good evening, everyone. Uh, two things happened on November seventh. Um, one, obviously, was the passage of the renewal levy. And two, there was an election that will bring three new Board of Education members to our district. First, it feels good, once again, to support the levies. I've always, um, never been anti-levy, I have been pro-student and pro-doing the right thing. So if I'm again voting for the levies, the district's moving forward. Um, and moving in the right direction. I want to take a minute, though, to address the board, um, and address a board member who has stepped up and took on a thankless role supporting our students and advocating on behalf of all students. In the very short time she has been a board member, she led with integrity and her own thoughts and decisions, not wavering to the political environment that plagues this district. Second, I ask the board here tonight that will be serving our district alongside the three new Board of Education members to commit, to continue to be strong leaders for public education. We are in very uncertain times at the state level, and public schools are and have been under attack for many years. This is not new, and we watched it happen after Brown versus Board of Education. Most recently, the governor's biennial budget packed on an arsenal of hits against pub- public education and our communities that face the biggest barriers. Please remind them that school choi- choice is not really a choice for all children when private schools can pick and choose who they want to educate. It is a modern-day segregation tool. Lastly, lead them to vote in the best interest of all students in our district, no matter their gender, religion, or sexual orientation, and not to their political groups, special interests, or radical ideologies. Thank you guys very much for letting me speak, and also, um, I invite, I invite the new Board of Education members along with any Board of Education members that are here tonight to come, as Dr. Smylek said, to November sixteenth, um, where we will be talking a little bit more in-depth about public education. And then also, um, I thought it was pretty, um, cool that it's also National Parent Involvement Day